All right, we are going to get started here today. Ayontae Anderson, Vice President of the Denver School Board. A U O N apostrophe T A I A N D E R S O N. Today you'll be hearing from Denver School Board Treasurer, Scott Esserman, Denver School Board President, Sochi Gaitan, and Pam Bishelia from Advocacy Denver. And we will, we're framing this with what we know with direct knowledge as of today. There is still ongoing information that will be, you'll need to reach out to Bill Good, our district chief of communications person, for further information and statements by the district. I'm going to tone set with our Denver Public Schools equity statement. And that means it is DPS is a district, will be a district that is free of oppressive systems and structures rooted in racism and what's, and ones which enter, excuse me, and one which centers students and team members with a focus on racial and educational equity, enabling students to ultimately become conscientious global citizens and collaborative learners. We've been engaging with the McCullough International community since July 3rd regarding the termination of former Principal Kurt Dennis for divulging confidential student information and other problematic allegations that surfaced into the, and previous allegations into the former principal. On August 1st, new allegations came to light after the community meeting at Manuel High School. I received an email at 9:33 PM from a whistleblower that identifies as a member of the McCullough staff and stated, and stated in their email, "Students of color were locked in this room multiple times last year, and this lock is on the outside of the door." This email, and there is a manila folder that will go around for reporters at this time. You will be able to see the lock that is placed on there and other additional information that is in this room. It is now being circulated at this time. This email included a video of a door that was modified with a barrel bolt latch outside of the door. This would prevent anyone inside of the room from exiting the room. After review of the footage, I sent it to Superintendent Alex Morello for confirmation. He later confirmed this room does exist at McCullough International School and that the district had no prior knowledge of this room in its existence. The lock was removed from the door after a work order was submitted by a school employee citing the repair, the room needed repairs. And in the repairs, there's a work order that's also on the handout that was just attached, and it stated the following, and I quote, "Multiple holes in drywall due to student rage and incarceration." Multiple holes in the drywall due to student rage and incarceration. I am grateful the superintendent has taken this matter seriously and has, and what role the former principal of McCullough may or may not have played, or any employee may or may not have played in the institution of this incarceration room. It is important to note that this incarceration room was instituted under the former principal's leadership. As someone who has worked in Denver Public Schools for the last six years, I have an obligation to, just as any employee in the district, to report information that might adversely impact our students, and I did just that. Yesterday, along with Director Esserman, and we went and visited the McCullough campus and found Room 121E, the room in question. We discovered in this walkthrough that locks had also been placed on the windows of the room, that the vent in the room was destroyed. And having a lock that was placed on the outside preventing anyone from exiting the room via the door and locks placed on the window, in my opinion, is a violation of the city and county of Denver's fire code. Seclusion, example, leaving a child alone and preventing aggress, is against board policy. It is my recommendation that this must be reviewed by the Denver Police Department and the Colorado Department, or the Colorado Bureau of Investigation to ensure that none of the adults in this detained any student against their will and ensure that these acts did not result in serious or physical, serious physical or emotional harm towards our students. The Board of Education has been officially briefed with a timeline of these events, with witness testimony and roles that several adults may or may not have played in the creation and execution of this room. Finally, I want to thank this brave whistleblower for being brave enough to come forward and share this information and allowing us as a district to investigate this matter. Their courage and dedication to the truth is a testament to their character, and without their resolve, we may have remained in the dark about this consequential issue. This is an example of living out our end statement, being a district that is free of oppressive systems and structures. Our schools are places of learning, not prisons. You will be hearing from, in this order, Director Scott Esserman. You'll then hear from Pamela Bishelia from Advocacy Denver. And we will close with remarks from the Denver School Board President, Sochi Gaitan. And then we will open it up for questions from the media.
Scott Esserman, S C O T T E S S E R M A N, School Board Director at Large and School Board Treasurer. We have an obligation to teach every student who comes into our buildings, including our most vulnerable students. And what we picture our most vulnerable students as being may not be who they actually are. They may be students who have experienced trauma, who are acting out, who are not just meekly in a corner. I'm speaking today in part as a parent of a Denver Public Schools student who could not imagine if this had happened to my child. My child looks a lot like me. He's got a little more hair. He's made mistakes. He, at a young age, took a knife to school. Not to do anybody any harm, he just thought it was cool. Colorado law says, under zero tolerance policy, you can't bring a knife to school. He was not locked into a room for being a danger to himself or anyone else. He was treated with dignity and respect. And I would hope that as parents in Denver Public Schools, that's how we want all students to be treated. My, my son has the luxury also of having my skin color. The students who were placed in this room did not have that same luxury. We have an obligation to teach and keep all of our students safe. Incarcerating them is not the way to do so.
Good morning. My name is Pamela Bishelia, that's P A M E L A, B as in Boston, I S C E G L I A. I am the Executive Director of Advocacy Denver, formerly known as the Ark of Denver. Advocacy Denver works with individuals, both children and adults with disabilities. I had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, and I reduced our discussion and our concerns to writing. I shared with the superintendent that Advocacy Denver understands that some of the McCullough community would like the district to reinstate Principal Dennis. Advocacy Denver has a different position. I shared that our agency has filed more complaints against McCullough than any Denver school. Advocacy Denver works with McCullough's diverse community of parents, but minority students, in particular black male and female students, have been targeted for the most egregious violations of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act under Mr. Dennis's leadership. When filing the systemic complaint with the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights against Denver Public Schools in 2021, which is pending, and the Colorado Department of Education in 2022, the decision was issued September 22, 22, alleging systemic racism. Mr. Dennis was one of the school leaders that we knew to forward the practice of fast-tracking minority male students into a separate school exam setting. For example, a number of years ago, Mr. Dennis made a decision to assign a student without a disability to the Effective Needs Program. The Effective Needs Program is only for students with disabilities, and it's said to be designed to work with students with emotional disabilities. The parents were going through a divorce. This had an impact on the student, a black male. He was admitted to the Children's Hospital for a short time. When the student returned to school, Mr. Dennis assigned him to the A N program. The paraprofessional in that program referred to the student as "children's." And when the student refused to do something, the paraprofessional would say, "Children's? What would the white coat say if they saw you doing that?" One day, the student lost his temper and was sent to the principal's office. The student threw his backpack at Mr. Dennis. Mr. Dennis called the parents and told them that the student, he was expelling the student from school. Advocacy Denver intervened. In order to avoid a formal complaint, the district paid tuition for private school, and the district provided training to McCullough's staff. The principal was not reprimanded, and the staff that was in the program returned the next year to the school. Advocacy Denver filed a formal complaint when Mr. Dennis located the Effective Needs Program in a small office. There were 12 students, male predominantly black, assigned to the program. Students were not provided books, technology, access to the general education curriculum, or activities. Students had to earn the privilege to eat lunch or participate in any school activities with typical peers. DPS did not prevail in that complaint, and Mr. Dennis was required to move the program to a standard-sized classroom and provide appropriate technology, curriculum, and materials. McCullough was also named in a complaint that we recently filed just July 17th because McCullough did not have a special education teacher for their A N program, and the instruction and supervision was delegated to unlicensed paraprofessional staff. You've heard two members of the Board of Education talk about the use of seclusion at McCullough. You're advised to take a look at the Public Law Protections of Persons from Restraint Act. It talks about seclusion and restraint. Restraint and seclusion is only said to be used in an emergency, and Denver Public Schools' policy, JKA, J K A R, bans the use of seclusion. Because even though McCullough is an innovation school, it does not waive their requirement to follow public, or to follow Denver Public Schools' Board of Education policy, or state, or federal policy. Advocacy Denver will be filing a formal complaint with Colorado Department of Education for violation of the Protections of Persons from Restraint Act and secluding students with disabilities in the separate room. And clearly, the room was not appropriate, and that kind of practice is not sanctioned by the district and/or by the state.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sochi Gaitan, President of the Denver School Board. I first would like to share that we do have colleagues that could not be here to join us today due to work commitments, family commitments. They could not make the press conference. They are with us, though, in solidarity as we speak on this very serious matter. So again, with us is Treasurer Scott Esserman, Vice President Ayontae Anderson, and missing is Directors Charmaine Lindsay, along with Directors Scott Balderman and Secretary Michelle Quattlebaum. I know that Director Carrie, I'm sorry, Dr. Carrie Olson is driving right now. She's driving from Minnesota to Colorado to return back to work for the DPS Board of Education. She is committed to, I'm sorry, she committed to the month of July to care for her ailing mother, who's in a senior care facility. Superintendent Dr. Marrero wishes to join us today, however, he is still very ill. And under the weather, he has a commitment on Zoom right now with leadership training with his team. As you heard from Vice President Anderson, and he shared with you regarding the events that occurred within the last 24 hours, this investigation is ongoing and is of very sensitive nature. I will keep my remarks to only the known facts, and as the outcome of this for me in this investigation is very important, and it needs to bring justice. I first want to commend the individual that brought the information to light and sent it to Vice President Anderson. It takes courage to do the right thing. I also want to commend Vice President Anderson for taking the steps he took forward with the information to General Counsel and to the Board. General Counsel also immediately took steps to launch what is now an ongoing investigation. I know that after a short conversation with Superintendent Dr. Marrero, he is deeply committed to his continued effort to follow the Board's end statements, which is our vision and our goals that we have for this district. End's one statement speaks to DPS being free of oppressive systems and structures that are rooted in racism. One which centers our students and team members with a focus on racial and educational equity, enabling our students to ultimately become conscientious global citizens and collaborative leaders. And we all have this collective responsibility. So with that, I commend Dr. Marrero for the courageous act of holding End's one as I have not seen prior superintendents do so. I have not seen the level of commitment to dismantle oppressive systems within the public education system in Denver. I want to share that the McCullough students and parents have shared and expressed their concerns, and Vice President Anderson led a couple of community meetings where he heard them and was listening. And we, as a Board, are hearing them and listening. We are also keeping in mind facts and information as we are currently receiving it. All information will help us make an informed decision for the vote that will take place at our next Board meeting. I also want to reassure the students and the parents of the McCullough School community that we deeply care about your students' learning and the outcomes at your school. Rest assured, Superintendent Dr. Marrero and his teams are working toward providing the leadership and the support necessary for McCullough students and their families in order for them to have a quality school, quality learning environment as they kick off the new school year. And if there's additional questions that you and I may have, we'll have Vice President Anderson lead a Q and A. I'm also available for Spanish-speaking media. Estoy disponible después de esto para los medios del habla español.
Thank you.
And can you tell us, again, go over this incarceration room? What is your understanding? How was it used? Who was in there? What was happening? Were students locked in this room?
There's a lot of information that we are still trying to gather and are unable to give a lot of specifics into how this room was executed. We do know that the windows were locked. We do know that the door had a barrel-batch lock attached to it. We do know that this was not submitted through a work order of the Denver Public Schools to request these additional adjustments to the room to be made per the principal. We are still investigating how those locks were placed on, and currently, the room was not in any condition whatsoever to be actually a sanctioned room to bring in students for seclusion.
And I think the question is still out there. Follow, please. The question is still out there. Do you know for sure if students were ever held in that room?
Yes.
They were.
Ayontae, on that note, so there's already pushed back to your presser this morning from parents and other leaders in our community who call this a de-escalation room. They say they worked with DPS on the design of this de-escalation room. They got guidance from DPS and approval to have this de-escalation room, which they say are common across the district. What's your response to that?
Locking children into a room where you have locks placed on windows and a barrel-batch lock placed on the exterior side of the door is not, in my opinion, supposed to be in any of our learning environments. The fact that the room was called an incarceration room by a staff member at the school in a work order to have it removed says enough. This was not in compliance with what we currently ask for in our district policies. And I'll ask that you, and when we even talk about the room, and even talks about multiple holes in the drywall due to student rage. So this is something that will need to continue to be investigated. I refer them to the Department, or to the Denver Public Schools Department of General Counsel. This is a serious allegation. We must investigate it and make sure that any students that were placed into this room were not placed in there against their will or had any sort of serious or emotional harm. Jenny and then Medea.
I have a question for Pam. I know the Colorado Department of Education made a ruling about systematic violations against black boys in September 2022.
Yes.
I'd like to focus on the district. What has the district done since then? And the principal argues that he had asked for help from the district, the A N center, and didn't get it.
So the district is, does have a corrective action plan in place. That plan is being monitored by Colorado Department of Education. There are different actions that the district must take by certain dates. And, and so that complaint has not been closed, and that Colorado Department of Education continues to monitor the district. Is, in terms of, my expectation would be that if a principal or if a school said that they needed support with their Effective Needs Program, that Exceptional Student Services would be in a position to provide technical assistance and to support them with that. I heard, and I can't respond to whether they did or not, whether they were responsive or not. I heard mention of a de-escalation room, and that when we go to some schools, they do in fact have what they refer to as a de-escalation room. It's a room where they might have soft lights, they might have bean bags, and adult sits with the child the entire time they're in that room. The door is never closed, the door is never locked, the student is never left alone. And that's why we would assert what was being put, what was put in place at McCullough was seclusion. In addition, if you look at the Protections of Persons from Restraint Act and the rules, it demands that parents receive notice. If it's anticipated, they may use restraint or seclusion, and it demands that the parent receive notice at the end of the day if in fact there is any kind of physical management or seclusion from peers.
Yeah, could you put the, I'm sorry, just to follow up with something that you said earlier. Can you put into context what you said about the most complaints against McCullough?
Yes, Advocacy Denver is, our goal is always to try to work with the school and the district to resolve issues, but there are some schools where leadership is very firm in terms of the way they do business. We don't file a lot of complaints, but we filed more complaints against McCullough over the past 10 years than any other Denver Public School. Sometimes the district's response, I gave the example of the student where they referred to the student as "children's." That was one where the district came to the table. Certainly, Mr. Dennis was at the table. He heard what the concerns were. He heard that he does not have the authority to expel a student. He heard that he does not have the authority to place a student without a disability into a special education setting. And in the end, there was a decision and an offer from the district that the student, that the district paid for private education. And then my ask was, I think we're all lifelong learners, and if in fact there was some confusion on the part of that school leader about roles, responsibility, and authority, the professional development was a way to address that.
Medea, go ahead.
Do you think that this is a case of racism or systemic oppression? That's my first question. The second question is, what strategies or supports are being, will be implemented for the students that will be at McCullough this year as all of this is happening, as they go into that year? I would like to hear from Scott as well on either one of those questions.
So I'll say that everybody is innocent until proven guilty. That is the bedrock of our justice system. Right now, we have, we have an investigation that we are currently undergoing to ensure, to figure out who was knowledgeable of said room, if students, when, when students were in this room, were they alone? There are a lot of things that we have to, we're still investigating. But off face, we're grateful that a whistleblower came forward and said, "This is problematic," and brought this to our attention. But to be very honest with you, as a, as a father of an Afro-Latino child, I would be furious if I ever walked into my son's future middle school and saw that room in the condition that I saw it, and it was used or told me that it was a de-escalation room. That's not a de-escalation room. That was a prison that I saw yesterday at McCullough International School.
For students in that regard, there's a second part.
Go ahead, Director Esserman, to the second part.
Well, I want to, I want to answer directly your questions. One, is this racism and systemic oppression, as we say in our end statements, we're committed to eliminating? I think based on the evidence we have in front of us and based on what the whistleblower has provided to us, absolutely. The whistleblower says clearly this is students of color who were placed into this environment. And, and if that's not systemic oppression, I'm not sure what is, although I have a lot of other examples. But, but the answer to that is yes. I do believe that that's what we're dealing with here. And, and I believe that based on what Pam has told us today, that this has, this is not a single incident, that this is not a single time that this has happened at McCullough International School under the current administration. I want to make sure to answer the second part of your question as well, which is, how do we ensure parents and families and students that are coming back to McCullough that this will be an environment where their students can learn, where they can learn, et cetera? And, and what I know is I know that Dr. Marrero and his team are working in conjunction with the interim principal and his team to ensure that we maintain the level of education that has gone on at McCullough, and that we're not undermining that.
Is the interim principal still in place? That was announced as a...
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Just saw Jeff's statement.
Brother Jeff, and then Nine News.
Were the three of you thinking of voting differently about Kurt Dennis before this came out?
I can't speak for my colleagues. I can only speak for myself. I had planned to vote against the termination of Kurt Dennis up until this week. This, this dramatically changed my opinion, and unfortunately, not unfortunately, I will be casting a vote to officially terminate Principal Dennis's employment. Brother Jeff. That's if they're comfortable. But if they're not going to discuss it, then I'm going to go to Brother Jeff.
What I can share with you in terms of my vote was that all along from early on in my conversations with Superintendent Dr. Marrero and his decision of the firing of Kurt Dennis,
Just gonna, just gonna point out that the times that I have voted in opposition to a recommendation from the superintendent have been at a time that there's been evidence that would support voting in opposition to that. And I have not seen evidence that would support voting against Mr. Dennis's termination.
Brother Jeff.
So I want to go slow.
Okay. We have only a few more minutes left, y'all.
It seems like racism is on trial in DPS right now. The firing of Kurt Dennis speaks to treating the people of color, and much of what we're talking about right now is riddled with race. And so my question is, you're calling the whistleblower courageous, and Kurt Dennis is known as a whistleblower. Is this a culture that has more, or are you finding more incidents through whistleblowers that are also egregious? Or is this isolated? Are you finding more situations that you have concerns about? That, that's my, my question there. And then also, listening to Advocacy Denver, there's a long line of complaints over a long period of time that all of a sudden, right now, is the moment. My question is this. If there's a white paper that has been delivered to the district that details the knowledge of exactly what you're sharing right now, that the district knew about this and is not just now finding about this, what would you do in that regard?
Well, I'm going to answer it kind of in reverse. I think that answering a hypothetical could be dangerous because that is just not the fact. The Denver Public Schools did not have, and... The Denver Public Schools did not have, and Superintendent Marrero's team did not have knowledge, that this was going on at McCullough International, nor did Superintendent Marrero or his team know that we were utilizing, or that the school was utilizing locks on the windows and a barrel-batch lock on the door, and that it was not properly in code of what a de-escalation room would actually be in Denver Public Schools. To the first part, I think that these are two different situations. In this instance, we have a whistleblower that did reach out to their superior, raise a concern, and was told to keep it at the status quo. And in the other instance, we don't have any evidence that Principal Dennis reached out to any board member or the Office of the Superintendent to relay his concerns around, that he shared on Nine News previously. There is a Northeast Denver Innovation Zone. He also has another bureaucratic system that he could have gone to, and they could have brought those concerns to Denver Public Schools. To my knowledge, that line of communication does not exist.
In his letter, in his response, and I want to go back to the colleague's question in terms of Kurt Dennis, did notify and alert administration around the A N centers and did not receive any report, and he also indicated in his response that he did reach out, and that was a final resort. So you're saying?
I look forward to Principal Dennis's evidence to support that claim. Somebody over here? Anybody else? Kennedy?
Can I get the photos in our inbox?
All photos will be, and video will be emailed to all reports.
Also, it's good to see that the DPS School Board is united together behind the sake of kids. And it seems there's also a problem ongoing with these innovation schools. What problems do they actually solve for DPS? And also, how do you all address parents that believe Kurt Dennis is a great leader? And were any of their kids ever locked in this room?
We don't know of any reports of the specifics of all of the students who were, may have been involved in this room. The district is still investigating this matter. When it comes to innovation schools and innovation zones, they play a different role in giving school autonomy, but this is not an opportunity for you to be autonomous in your, in the learning education environment that we have. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add some comments to, very similar question to what Brother Jeff asked in the case of racism and race, race relations. I want to start off by sharing the term "white fragility," and that is the sentiment coming from people of white skin when they are being told by someone of color information regarding their inherent racism. And they get sentimental and fragile about the information. I personally have experienced this my entire life, being a Latina, undocumented, born in Mexico, having the undocumented immigrant experience my whole life. And what I'm seeing unfold throughout the community of McCullough, I'm seeing white fragility as information is being disseminated. And I ask you folks in the white community to really gather the information, look at it through the lens of facts and truth, to really understand our communities of color and what they're experiencing and feeling today. Once this information comes to light, as you all are reporting on this seclusion room or incarceration room, really put yourself in the seat or in the shoes of a mother of color, a black mother, a Latina mother, a black father, a Latina, a Latino father. How would you feel if you were them, knowing that your child was locked in that room? I really want you to think about that.
We'll have from Jessica, and then she'll be our last comment.
Just, hang on just a second. I'm a little bit concerned because I've heard questions that seem to suggest that perhaps the whistleblower who shared with us the information about this room is being questioned when Kurt Dennis was lionized for being a whistleblower. That what we're talking about is the demonization of a particular group of students. If you're not reporting on that, you're not helping us dismantle the systems of oppression and racism. I'm hearing it right here, right now, live. What Kurt Dennis supposedly whistleblowed on wasn't anything illegal, wasn't anything unethical, wasn't anything immoral. And what we're looking at right here is all of those things. I implore you to please make sure we're not questioning this whistleblower. We were told that when Kurt Dennis was fired, it would have a chilling effect on whistleblowing.
Jessica.
I wanted to confirm, were students placed in this room alone?
We're still investigating that matter. So I'm going to end with this.
I have one more, a follow-up question for Advocacy Denver. Did you say that some of the students might have had disabilities that were in that room? Did I hear that correctly? Or do you have any understanding of that at all?
I do not know the students that were in that room, but I think it's probably safe in that, when I think about the question that was asked earlier about it being identified as a de-escalation room, I would assert that probably every single one of the students that was put in that room might be a student with a disability.
Director, just to answer the question in terms of, are there other concerns that you are receiving or looking into? I know that this one is foremost right now, but are there other pressing concerns that have come to your board's attention?
We have spoken with parents that would share my skin complexion, that have shared different stories than what the majority of you all have heard about their treatment at this school. We are looking, we encourage anybody to reach out to the district and share their story. We are going to protect their identity. We have an anonymous hotline folks can reach out to, or you can also do the same thing that this individual did and reach out to your board member. But the way that we're going to end this conference is I'm going to make sure that people understand, you have a united Board of Education, united against this sort of behavior. We are not going to tolerate it in any Denver Public School. We will not tolerate it in any park or any classroom, any office space, any innovation school, any charter school, any traditional school. Students that are in our district do not go to prison when they wake up at 8:00 a.m. They go to school. And so we will be making sure we investigate this matter to the fullest extent. We will hold the vote on August 24th on the formal recommendation to terminate the former principal, but regardless of that vote, this investigation still will go on. We need to make sure that if anybody else in the district is practicing any of these sorts of practices, be put on notice. We are not going to allow it to happen in this district whatsoever. So make sure that we are treating all of our students with dignity and respect, and we will no longer face any sort of discrimination like this.